Okay, at this time we have called a two thousand eighteen annual budget for the city of New Ulm. For December fifth, two thousand seventeen, six twenty P M. The order. Do we want to go on the first gen item and then you've got something to say, Ryan, or?
Yeah, well, yeah, I just wanted to make a quick statement that, uh, uh, we apologize if anybody came to the first North Street, uh, door. We're still working through the, the new electronic lock syndrome. It's set up to automatically lock after council meetings and somebody didn't plug in the budget meeting tonight. And so that door did lock. The Broadway door was still open, so if you would have walked around, so if there's anybody out there watching and you couldn't get in from the first north doorway, uh, come on down or watch on T V, whatever your preference is, but, uh, you might inadvertently got locked out of the north, first north doorway, but the Broadway doorway was open.
And that's one of twenty six.
So I do apologize for that. We're still learning how these new doors work.
Okay. Item number one, A, consider motion approved the revenue expenditure adjustments for the preliminary two thousand eighteen budget. And then I suppose we'll go on to budget presentation by Nicole.
Okay, uh, Mr. President, counselors, uh, the following presentation, um, is based on the preliminary budget that was set in September. With the five and a half percent levy increase, um, I have made some changes based on discussions that we've, that were had at the November work session as well as some other issues or, or, um, errors that may have been caught between now and then. So I'll start by going through some of the items that have been changed since the preliminary was set. And then go through some of the actual numbers and totals that are in the budget. And then end by just kind of summing up the items that are in the budget and the items that are not in the budget. Before I go, we are down from the five and a half percent levy that was set for the preliminary to a one point six eight percent increase at this point in time. And of course, nothing in here is final yet until everything is approved at this, this, the December nineteenth meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so starting with some of the changes that have been, that we've made since the preliminary levy was set. Um, with the assistant city manager, uh, position, we have taken out three months of the salary. Um, to bring that budget down a little bit for this year or for, for twenty eighteen. As well as, as far as the funding for that position, since that is still in question at this point. Um, there is fifty thousand dollars in funding in the front from, for right now. Um, what the source of that is at this point is not, not clear. But I, I, I'm sure we'll be able to absorb whatever the difference would be between the funding they receive for that position and, and what it actually ends up costing the city. For the Human Rights Commission, uh, we talked about, um, reducing their, their, um, request by two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Which is still a three thousand dollar increase over last year's funding. We adjusted, uh, for the body cameras for the grant, we added twenty-six thousand dollars back in to cover our matching portion of that grant. And then with the police department payroll, we've taken out that, uh, additional investigator. Um, we've added a part-time administrative assistant or admin staff, um, due to the, the fire department staffing changes. And, um, and we made an adjustment to their social security budget, which for some reason looked like it had always been way over budgeted. So we looked at that a little closer. And then, uh, we changed the fire department revenue by increasing the rental inspections from fifteen to thirty dollars. And that will help fund part of that change due to the fire department, police department staffing changes. We added back in the retail economic development funding or contribution of thirty-five thousand dollars. And that's a continuation of what has, um, happened in prior years. Going through some miscellaneous accounts, we found about fifty-five hundred dollars in there. Including the mayor's contingency fund, um, the contribution to the Concord Singers. And then just some miscellaneous office supplies and, and travel expenses. And then I also adjusted the lieu of taxes now that the P U C budget is finalized. Or mostly finalized, not approved, but finalized. Just to bring that up to matching what the P U C is actually budgeted, is their contribution based on their revenues. So that was about a fifty-seven thousand dollar adjustment. Um, we made some changes based on the library fund balance. When I initially set the budget, I di- I didn't realize they wanted to use fund balance for one of their carpeting projects. So I made that adjustment. There was discussion about reducing the, the projects at Mueller Park from sixty thousand dollars down to thirty thousand. There was a park and rec enclosed trailer that was budgeted. And this one, I have to apologize, there was some confusion, um. When I put together the presentation, the trailer was presented as having a value of twenty-five thousand dollars. The value in the budget was actually only seven thousand dollars, and then there was a pickup truck budgeted as well for the twenty-five thousand dollars. So the budget I have here, I removed that seven thousand dollar trailer, but that truck is still in the budget. The, the consultant fees for the master park plan were cut from twenty-five thousand down to ten thousand dollars. The tree replacement program was cut from twenty thousand down to ten thousand. And then just picking through some miscellaneous accounts with park and rec, um, throughout all of their departments. We found about ninety-three hundred dollars, um, based on some changes in some revenue and some expense accounts. If you look at their historical usage, it, it brings it more in line. And then the city hall flooring and exterior door replacement were put into the budget, but those are budgeted to use fund balance, so it had no impact on the tax levy as it stands here. So then moving on. This first slide shows you the revenues that are budgeted by fund and source. So it shows you which funds, um, are using what portions of the revenue and where that revenue is coming from. So you can see that, um, a large portion of our revenue comes from property taxes and a large portion of that is used by the general fund. Which includes, um, administration, police, fire, public works. And then the next largest portion would be used by park and rec. Or actually debt service. And then park and rec. This slide just presents that, those same revenues in a little different way, it lets you, give you, gives you a picture of, of where those pieces of the pie are, are sitting within the budget. Shows a total revenue of twenty-two million, one sixty-six, seventy-two. And then with the expenses that are budgeted. This slide shows you, um, which departments are using those expenses and, and where, what they're going towards. For example, personnel services, supplies, and then other services and charges. And it gives you an idea of which funds and departments are using or have the highest expenses. And then this just shows the expenses again, um, it shows you where that, where those pieces are and, and a little bit different department breakdown as far as where the expenses are. So you see the public works, which, which includes engineering, the street department and the sewer. Public safety includes fu- like police and fire, um, community and rec includes the civic, the community center, Vogel and the park and rec administration staff. And then the parks includes the parks and the outdoor pools. And the other departments are, includes the cemetery, community access, the airport, E D A and the parking fund. In this slide, the difference between, and it shows a different total or budget total, it takes out that doubling effect that we have with the debt payments. Since the one debt fund receives all of the, all of the property tax revenue and then transfers it to those others, it shows up as an additional expense when that transfer is made to those other departments. So this takes that out of it and it also takes out that, um, the taxes for E D A and, uh, the parking fund as well. So if you look at this, you can see the expenses or the budget has decreased quite a bit this year over la- over the last two years. Mostly due to the large amounts of fund balance that were, that were, um, assigned for land purchases and, and some capital improvement projects. So it really didn't affect the tax levy because of the fund balance use in the prior years, but you can see where the budget has gone down. And then you can see the total tax levy is, is still going up one point seven one percent. And then looking at that last section of that top chart. You can see that based on the tax base, it should, you know, and, and each individual's market rate of their own home should show a small decrease in most residential property taxes for the year. This chart is always interesting to me, I think it's, it's interesting to see in, in associated to the, to the average citizen based on the average market value of a home in New Ulm. Where your tax dollars go on an annual or on a monthly basis. Just so you have an idea of what you're paying for as a, as a citizen. So you can see here that the debt service gets a huge portion of, of, um, the taxes that, that each individual taxpayer gives, pays in. And of course, that debt is used to pay for, uh, street improvements and infrastructure and, and those types of things. This chart just shows, um, if you look at the different colors within each year, it shows you, it gives you an idea about the property ta- or the city portion of the property taxes might be for individual house, houses based on their market value. And what it has done over the last few years. And then just to kind of sum it up, there's a few more slides here. This one shows you some of the items that are still included in the budget. Includes the assistant se- city manager, um, the impact that it has, um, the fire department staffing change, I have no numbers there. Because on an overall basis, that doesn't affect the levy or the budget. The effect comes within the police department if they replace that admin position. Um, and then if you look at the, you can see the retail economic development is still there. There's a Harmon Park lighting project for fifty thousand, that was, that's still in the budget. The, the Shunlow Park figurines, that, that's for four figurines. The Herman Heights retaining wall for two hundred thousand and the Mueller Park projects for thirty thousand.
Nicole, I think realistically, the fire department, the police department staffing change. If the police department had half a person and they're gonna have a half a person next year, actually, the police department is seeing.
It's seeing that increase, yeah, or the fire department is seeing an increase in their own individual budget.
Right.
But on a citywide budget level, it doesn't affect that total budget because that full-time position is still there.
Correct, but the, the applicable increase isn't necessarily from the police department, it's because the fire department is adding full-time persons at halftime, so you can, it says the same thing, it's gonna be the same, but realistically, we're not necessarily adding to the police, we're just maintaining. Which is a little bit different perspective.
And a few more things that are still in the budget, um, the dump trailer for the parks at about eighty-two hundred dollars. Uh, pickup truck that I ta- that I referred to earlier, um, for twenty-five thousand. Floor scrubbers for Vogel and the Civic Center. The Fender Park there, that whole im- that whole hundred and forty-six thousand isn't being, isn't included in the levy. Half of that's coming out of Parkland dedication fees. So the, the one point oh three percent impact there is for the seven, or for half of that hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. Then at the North Park, the stormwater inlet and the dugouts and backstop projects are still there. And there's fifteen thousand dollars in for a master park plan and ten thousand dollars for tree replacement. And then the last slide, um, just goes over some of the things that have been talked about but are not included in the budget right now. That would include any contribution to the sinking funds for the fire truck, um, equipment in the city facilities. Renovations, um, that may be needed in the future. This Shunlow Park controller, we talked about it, fifty thousand dollars. Harmon Park Field One lighting project of, for two hundred thousand. A splash pad for the parks at about two hundred and five thousand and then the city hall lighting project that was estimated at forty thousand. So as you look at those and you think about, or as the discussion goes forward, um, every seventy thousand dollars has about a one percent impact on that tax levy. So it's kind of a good base as we go forward with discussions. And that is all that I have for the presentation.
Thank you, Nicole. I guess I wasn't at the meeting where they discussed cuts and pluses and minuses, whatever it might happen to be, I guess. My comment is, is looking at the budget and going back to two thousand ten, we're actually only about a hundred thousand dollars over our two thousand ten budget. Which I think looks fairly favorable for what we're doing. So I, I don't have any problems with that, my biggest problem I have is probably as long as everybody's aware of it, we aren't putting anything in our sinking funds. And anytime you don't put anything in the sinking funds, just, uh, make sure that you can throw something out there nice that a taxpayer sometimes can be a mistake. I guess I'm always in favor of making sure our sinking funds is here, and I know we got Paul sitting back there and we're not putting anything back into the fire department sinking fund, and I know there's some trucks, fire trucks and stuff that are gonna be coming up to be replaced. Just a comment to you, Paul, you, you okay with I'll putting anything in this year?
They mean to call you on the spot.
President Schmitz and counselors, uh, I've been assured that, uh, that fund is in good shape. Uh, as I stated, uh, earlier this year, I'll be, uh, coming forward because we're gonna be looking at, uh, uh, starting spec work on a new engine to be replaced in two thou- uh, twenty nineteen. Um, I think, uh, uh, Nicole says we're in good shape, I think maybe we can hold off for a year and, and, uh, take a good look at, uh, maybe putting, putting something in there next year.
I didn't bring my worksheet, I was looking for the numbers that I had for the balances that are in those accounts and, and the projects that we know are coming in the next few years and where that leaves the funding, and I can't find my numbers.
So on the sinking fund for the city facilities, where, you believe we're good there too?
Yes, based on the, on the, on the projects that are coming up over the next even four or five years.
Okay.
We are covered there. Um, I wouldn't want to go the next four or five years without putting any in there.
Okay, then I guess I only, I only have one more question and comment and just for the, the record, once the budget is approved, it's said and done. I'd like to see the assistant city manager position. The wording changed to economic development slash assistant city manager. I think that's where the emphasis is gonna be, so I'd like to have that corrected. Other than that, anybody have anything?
I do know, Mr. Chair, that, you know, I've had a couple of phone calls when the preliminary tax increases came up and, and somebody in my ward had was on a fixed income, um, his estimated tax increase at that point was eighty dollars and to him that was a lot of money and it is when they're on a fixed income and so he was like, you know, please, if there's any way you can, you know, cut it even more, that would be much appreciated when I'm, um, that's eighty dollars less groceries I'm buying is basically what his comment was. So I think if we, we have a year when we can have a very low, um, preliminary or very low levy, I think we oughta take that opportunity and we haven't, you know, the school levy just rolled in and the county's looking at three and a half or three point six, um, all of that affects what, what our citizens pay and so I, I'm very happy with where we're, we're at for this particular year.
Well, based on what we're proposing here, based on the preliminary that came out on the city end, we're gonna see quite a difference.
Yes.
Should be a small, and that would, you know, that's gonna be based on all of their own market values and what happened with those, but.
Yep, I explain that to them.
Yeah, a comment I wanna make is, I mean, you know, we did do some heavy adjusting and I agree with, excuse me, I agree with the finance director, you can't do this year after year.
No, you can't.
Cut nine percent out of your budget to make it work for fire trucks for other city, city facilities, maintaining them. Uh, it's not gonna work. I wanna make a comment about, you know, okay, we're good this year, one point six eight. I thoroughly read through just recently a chamber commerce report, numerous times I read in there about what's going on with economic development. With the, uh, chamber position, you know, businesses, they claim the city doesn't do enough for them. Well, in one aspect, can we do more? Yes. One aspect, hey, we're only gonna raise your taxes one point six eight this year. On myself, I think we're doing a lot for the business. Uh, they probably didn't look at it like that, we're supposed to do a lot more, but I think we're doing a lot on it. I, I just, hopefully next year, I don't know where we're gonna be at with it, with capital improvements and whatnot, we won't be able to put that kind of money on hold.
I think we're accommodating a lot of services within our community and, you know, I mean, not, not just park and rec, but I mean, just with everything we're offering within the community and not to, you know, we're at one point six eight tonight and.
And renew is coming.
Yeah.
I thought President Schmitz would bring it up, I mean, you know, the park budget this year, okay, but in reality, I mean, you know, they did a great job this year on one item I'll still touch on, keeping theirs in check. But these numbers are gonna go up, the renew project in several years. I mean, we're gonna need income, taxes are gonna go on the rise and we won't have control on it. I mean, utilities, staffing, these renew projects were voted through, these numbers are gonna come into the park budget.
And that's why, getting, relating back to what you just said. Now is the time to put into the sinking fund because as we go on in the next two or three years. We're gonna see some drastic increases, I went back and looked and, uh, just over the last four or five years in our park budget, we have gone up tremendous, I mean, half a million dollars and stuff like that, so all of these numbers are gonna have a huge impact, so that renew is gonna, just so the public knows, it's gonna come to bite.
Oh, we also have an obligation to maintain the two buildings we discussed a meeting ago about, you know, maintaining that Riverside Park building and the Kiesling House. You know, it was a big discussion whether to heat it or not. And both those buildings are gonna keep on taking for a long time and I think we may have to put some more into the sinking fund yet.
I did find those sinking fund numbers, um, at the end of twenty seventeen, the fire truck replacement fund will have about one point seven million in it. And is, with the big projects going all the way up through two, two thousand thirty-two with truck replacement and gear replacement, um, that's about two million dollars. So to cover those projects right now, we'd be about five hundred thousand short.
By what year?
By twenty thirty-two. So that's going quite, quite a ways out into the future before those funds.
Anything to anybody, so.
And then with the city facility renovations, there's about two point two million dollars in there at the end of this year. With about nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars in needed projects through the year twenty twenty.
Yeah, I, I do have one other question, I mean, it, it, it just keeps bothering me, I'm gonna bring it up, we talk about this retaining wall. We did put the two hundred thousand dollars in there for this year, and I've been talking with the engineers. I'm just hoping the fund balance is getting low with the park and rec. And I do have the assistant city engineer here tonight, we, we discussed it. Both of us don't believe that's gonna be the correct amount of money to do that project. It's gonna come back to us, it's gonna be short, it's gonna, hey, we need a hundred and fifty thousand more, sorry about that, and we're gonna do what? I mean, from the preliminary drawings I saw and whatnot, that number just is not reality, and I know if Tom wants to speak on it, it's not reality of what I've looked into.
Tom Schmitz, Park and Recreation Department. Uh, that's the number we've been working with now for a little over a year. President Schmitz, counselors, you know, I also wanna point out this talk about the sinking funds. Um, you're, you're talking about the general fund is the sinking fund that you're talking about, the park and rec department doesn't have a sinking fund, we have a fund balance and we've been funding our major projects out of our fund, two fifteen. We haven't relied or asked for any general fund sinking dollars in the past, I don't know if mana- manager Grammets's tenure here, if there's ever been general fund dollars, um, out of the sinking fund or a capital project from general fund go to park and rec. I think that may have happened under a previous city manager, um, for some major projects, but, you know, I, I, I I think legally, the general fund can assist fund two fifteen if necessary, is that true?
Well, that'd be correct, but, what had happened, uh, in, in the prior city manager's administration was the park and rec budget fund balance was left at about three hundred thousand dollars and anything over three hundred thousand was dumped into the general fund. And then the city controlled that, then they used and they said, well, we need four hundred thousand. Then the city would say, okay, come to us and ask for that hundred thousand or, or whatever that dollar figure might have been. Uh, I took a different approach and I allowed the park and rec, uh, fund balance to grow on its own. So what they did not spend the year before went into their fund balance. That's why it attained the heights that it attained and that's why they've been doing the projects they've been doing. The general fund balance stands on its own and the park and rec fund balance stands on its own. They've just been doing a lot of projects.
Repairs, repairs and replacements for the most part.
Right, but it was, it, it was well, I don't remember what the total, the, the highest amount was, maybe Nicole could remember what that was, but we're talking millions of dollars at, at, at one point.
It was well over sixty percent.
Correct, and, and through their projects, they've, they've whittled it down. And, uh, at some point in time, as referenced by the city council. Not only are the projects kinda continuing, we're gonna be adding on more square footage, more utilities, more custodial, more whatever. So that's gonna put higher pressure on any fund balance again uh, to reaccumulate that to, uh, a higher level so that they have flexibility to get that thirty-five to fifty percent. So that's, uh, that's what's been going on in probably in the last twenty years here. They've had a really good, healthy fund balance, it's just that they've been working at fixing and repairing things.
And that stuff we fixed will not need to be fixed again in the near future. Um, getting back to Counselor Christian's question about the retaining wall, Herman Heights retaining wall on Center Street. You know, we'll put together the plans and specs, we'll bid it out, if the bids come in unfavorable, we may just postpone it. Um, and then retool our budget for nineteen.
I think one of the things on the retaining wall, or if you wanna call it that, uh,
non-retaining.
I don't know that we were actually planning on putting a retaining wall in, not, not like it currently looks, you know.
Our plan is to eliminate the retaining wall.
Eliminate the retaining wall, so really talking about dirt work. We're just doing a lot of dirt work, there's not, no concrete block going in, there's, you know.
But again, talking with the city engineer, some of the preliminary contours we saw were into the restroom. Whoops, I need a quarter billion dollars, we gotta put a new restroom in because we're gonna straighten or put an angle on the wall, that, that's what I'm getting at, the preliminary work.
Yeah, a, uh, a ma- small retaining wall to preserve the perv- per- the, the present restroom. You know, that's, that's a modest, small retaining wall. That's not putting up what we see on the south side of the Center Street Hill and trying to maintain that.
Yeah, I think relocating the, the restroom facility would be a dramatic cost.
Yes.
I hope it works.
That's for renew twenty forty.
Mr. Chair, just to note, this is a public hearing, so anybody else can.
Does anybody in the audience speak to be heard?
Oh.
State your name and address just for the record, Jim.
Name is Jim Jensen, twelve twelve South Ridge Road, New Ulm, Minnesota. President Schmitz and council members, thank you for allowing us to make a quick comment, allowing me to make a quick comment. Most of you know me probably, but, but I was, been in retail business, um, my whole life pretty much and, uh, had the store downtown New Ulm for forty years and uh, my heart's still in retail. So tonight, I'm here ready to thank you for including the retail service specialist position in this year's upcoming year's budget, I think it's very important. I think it's proactive thinking on your part. I'm, uh, fortunate to still be doing some, um, work in the retail world, I'm in Mankato quite a bit, I work with R C E F over there, which is a retail entrepreneurial facilitation, long-term, long, long title, uh, company, uh, organization, and I work with them as one of their team consultants. So I get to talk to quite a few retailers and I get around a little bit, and I was in Mankato for a meeting and, um, this person came up to me and said, hey, Jim. You're a, you're a retail person and Norm contacted me, sent me a letter there trying to get me to come to New Ulm and start a business. And I think that's a, that's a really good, that was exciting for me, I've heard actually from a couple of people when I'm out and about. That to know that we are out there, uh, casting our net for more retail presentation. And you know, when you think about retail, uh, it is, it is really the, the, you know, the whole community is, is het- has a retail presentation. But the downtown area, the heart of New Ulm, is what people think of when they come to, and when you go to a city, you, you wanna see the downtown and I, I just think the, uh, the retailers are doing an excellent job right now. And with your support of this position and not, not only this year, but hopefully in the future. We continue to keep that ball rolling that started rolling so nice, there's a lot of new, new shops opening up and I know there's a lot of interest, a lot of it's confidential, so you don't know what's going on. But, uh, it is really important to our community and, and I, I thank you for, uh, including it in the budget, I hope you continue to support it and um, I think New Ulm's really a special place and I'm fortunate to have been had such a fun time in retailing and I miss it every day, I'd start, I'd do it all over again, but thanks, thanks for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Jim. Thanks for coming.
Anybody else? Do we have anything else we wanna discuss in the budget?
I guess I'd like to know a little bit more maybe from Mr. Schmitz in regards to the half-ton pickup truck. Um, we didn't really touch on that at our last meeting and now we're kinda surprised that we've got a truck.
And that was my, that was my mistake.
You're buying a truck, Nicole.
Are we replacing? Are we adding to the fleet?
President Schmitz, Counselor Mack, counselors, uh, this is, um, another step in a multi-step process. And each step is a year, uh, to cycle out previously surplus old pickup trucks. Uh, we've done, I think, three of them now over the past three years and this may be the last one. Where the Park and Rec Department has accumulated an old retired surplus truck from another department. Um, and we've put it into service for years and, uh, this is to get rid of our, one of our really old trucks. Um, that's been previously surplus and this may be the last one we have to do that to.
So on a scale of one to ten, I mean, ten being the best, one being the worst, I mean, where is it at on the scale?
The old truck?
Yeah, I mean, would it make it another year?
Um, I would not want to place staff in it for another year. This is a half-ton two-wheel drive pickup truck replacement. And I think that, um, it's an important, um, upgrade to our fleet.
Many of the older trucks that Park and Rec has, uh, obtained through the years, served their first fifteen years. With the PVC gas department. And when they got rid of them, rid of that vehicle, we said, hey, we have a lot of summertime park help running around. And we don't have a lot of time for the supervisor to keep bussing people from this project to that project. So we acquired those vehicles at, uh, minimal cost, you know, fifteen hundred dollars, three thousand dollars. They've then spent four or five years in Park and Rec. And by the time they get to that point in time, they've rusted out, you know, their, their pretty beat up, uh, vehicles. And, uh, we can continue to, uh, as Tom puts it, receive hand-me-downs. Uh, or we can embark on a, a plan to replace. Now, we still will probably look at the hand-me-down trucks because in summer help is always, it's always necessary to have a couple of, uh, older vehicles around. Just for that purpose, but for normal operations, uh, well, well, I think what I'm trying to do is. And say is put Park and Rec on the same par as all the other departments with their vehicles. Aside from the few that we need to have that, that are just summertime vehicles. And even those, they reach a, a life that we have to get rid of them too and replace them with something else.
Right, and this will be going into the revolving fleet account managed by the Public Works Director. And that we will be paying a monthly rent, um, for service and depreciation on it down the road. This is the normal procedure on how to add a vehicle to the revolving fleet account. Is that the department has to pay for its purchase and then it goes into the rental fleet, so to speak.
Which then adds to the tax burden and we talked about how that just tends to escalate.
Maintenance, repair and replacement, yes.
As long, we're not, we're not done closing the meeting yet, Tom. I do have a question again. I'm still, I'm going through that Mueller Park thing. I know we cut thirty thousand dollars out of it, cause to me it was actually like a luxury thing. Did the improvements get done this year? Cause there was, the budget, it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollar amount, cause I didn't see much action there.
That's a great question, that's a great question. And, um, there was another, uh, mistake created in the, uh, uh, the work session documents that came out of Park and Rec. For Miller Park, uh, those projects, um, those smaller projects are completed or, um, encumbered. And so the sixty thousand dollars originally, um, that Park and Rec meant to put into the eighteen budget for Miller Park. Is for a shade structure on the grandstand. Now let me back up further to the hundred and fifty thousand dollars in twenty seventeen. Um, we have not, uh, been able to spend all that money and finish those projects. So you cutting sixty thousand, six hundred down to thirty thousand for eighteen. Uh, will work for us if we can carry over the seventy-some thousand dollars remaining in seventeen to finish the projects at Miller.
So we did seventy grand worth of work?
Yes.
What did we do?
Seventy-two thousand. There's a scoreboard.
I will call up the facility maintenance supervisor who managed those projects, including a thirty thousand dollar.
See a lot of activity this year there.
Yeah, Ryan Wire, Stillies Maintenance Supervisor. Um, so the scoreboard was a large chunk of that. That was about thirty-eight thousand dollars between the scoreboard and the contractor to put it up. And then we did basically complete the two, uh, dugout remodels. And we did pour quite a bit of co- concrete as well around the plaza, what I call plaza area. And then, uh, there was a lot of little, smaller projects that kinda added up. Uh, one of the projects that did not get completed is a fence, uh, replacement down the left field line. To, uh, kind of create a different scenario. Currently, there's a fence in front of the retaining wall and that's created a very, very difficult area to maintain. So what we did was we moved the fence on top of the retaining wall and wanted to remove the fence that's on the field of play. So that PO has been issued, that work has been awarded. It just didn't get completed this fall. Um, and then, like I said, there are a lot of little projects. There was a, a safety fence put around the utilities that are on the back of the dugout. Um, so quite a few little projects like that have all kinda trickled up towards or into what the numbers.
Originally, it was budgeted for the shade structure.
That's what the sixty thousand was for, yeah, and the remainder of the seventy-eight had other projects involved. Um, as the summer has progressed and work has been done, uh, into looking into those projects, there are some minor changes. And, um, if the thirty thousand is allotted, I think we can adjust the other projects with the seventy-eight. To get a shade structure even put up, um, yet or following year.
Anybody else have anything?
Nicole, I have one question.
Mm-hmm.
Um, when you went through your list of changes, you have a part-time inspector. You took out six months, did you say, of salary or?
Yes.
You skipped over that.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah.
At the, at the time, um, I didn't know if they were gonna fill that position. We made the assumption if they decided to, it wouldn't be for the full, full year next year, that they wouldn't hire that person until three to six months into the year.
Is that a replacement then for?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep.
That's right.
I guess I was confused. I was thinking police department, but no, I'm on the same page.
Mr. President, maybe before we close up tonight, just to thank you to city staff and department heads for their work on, uh, the budget this year. It's a long process and we, I know we ask a lot of questions and we, and we ask for a lot of detail. But we need those facts to make the decisions that we've made here tonight, so on behalf of the entire council, thanks to all of you. Do we need a motion to close this up?
I would say yes.
So I'll offer, offer a motion to close the public hearing and accept the budget as stand, as it stands.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, close public hearing. Approve the budget as stated. Any more questions? If not, I'm gonna make one statement. I know we've tried to do things different this year than we have in the past. And next year, maybe if we could get the city council together and Nicole and the department heads maybe. And I'll push it, say, July, June, sometime before they actually start their budgets. And kinda give them an idea where, where we're really headed, what we want and stuff like that, rather than after the fact. They go through all the work and put something in their budget and then we come in and say, whoop, nope. You know, so I think we need to really be active with them, I think, and it'd work a lot better, a lot smoother, so.
President Schmitz, I've already made some of those changes to next year's schedule, so.
Great.
Well, I mean, one of those, just an example, it'd be what was presented tonight, you know, is with the steel. You know, and it's all coming at the end of the year.
Right.
If we could be working on that in March, April and looking at numbers, you know, it might be achievable in twenty nineteen. You know, but we don't, we, it's, it's hard at the end of the year to say, alright, we're gonna put a million and a half dollar addition on.
Mm, yeah.
You know, and twenty-five thousand, you know, we can accommodate it, I felt, you know, because it's a multipurpose room. We're adding more usable square footage for an existing facility, so that's just my comments.
That's good. Anybody else have any comments before? All in favor, say aye.
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 Both, no?